Oh, boy.
All right, so. We got. Hang it down.
Are we, are we ready?
Yeah.
The clock's not on.
Well, well, I don't have to.
I don't know. Oh. There you go. There you go.
Okay.
There, okay. Here's seven oh two. Then I call it August third, twenty twenty one, regular meeting of the Franklin County Planning Commission to order. Let's see. Is this on? There you go. It gets it's on.
It's on if the red light's on, I think.
Before we get to the meeting, I will turn things over to staff to discuss the meeting format.
Thank you, Chair. This is, um, first time we've been together in person for a while, however, we are still operating on kind of a hybrid methodology. So tonight's meeting will be conducted in person primarily and using an online virtual meeting platform. Should an individual planning commissioner attending virtually become unexpectedly disconnected, please rejoin the meeting at your first opportunity. The record will reflect your attendance. The meeting will be paused for up to ten minutes to address technical difficulties. If they cannot be resolved within ten minutes, then the meeting will proceed so long as the quorum of the planning commissioners are present.
Will playing staff, please, roll, announce rule call and announce whether or not we have a quorum.
Kent McMullen.
Present.
Mike Vincent.
Here.
Lake Low.
Here.
Mike Corales. Roger Link.
Present.
Melinda Didier. Claude Parrott.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay. And will staff in attendance, please introduce yourselves.
Derek, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Chair Claude Parrott.
We're staff here, guys.
Excuse me. Been awhile.
Oh, it has. Um, yeah, I'm Derek Rotten. I'm the Director of Planning and Building.
I'm Rebecca Gilly. I'm the Planning and Building Services Administrator.
I'm Erin Gunderson. I'm the Planner One.
Okay.
That's it for staff.
I will now lead us in Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve agenda for tonight's meeting. Which is the, uh, to update the Franklin County Planning Commission and Shoreline Management Board bylaws.
We have an approval. I'm sorry. I left that off the, uh.
Oh, approval of, of, oh, okay, excuse me.
Now, that, that was my mistake. I left that off the script.
Okay, we need to, everyone has read the minutes from the. Me from the July meeting.
July and June eight.
And June, okay, I wasn't here for July, but anyway. If you've already, I need a pro, a motion to approve the minutes of the past two meetings.
That would be June eighth, twenty twenty one, and July thirteen, twenty twenty one.
Okay.
I move to approve both of those past meetings minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved by, uh, Commissioner Ken and second by Commissioner Leighton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? No one. Okay. Public hearings, none scheduled. Workshop update to Franklin County Planning Commission and Shoreline Management Board bylaws.
Oh, like, I apologize. It's Shoreline Hearings Board.
Okay.
Wrong title over there.
I'm being sabotaged here tonight.
I had to get these out before I left this evening.
Okay. Anyway, um, do you, does the staff need, do you want to speak on that?
Basically, as. As I hope you all are aware, that the bylaws are per, purely the purview of, um, the planning commission to. Write, um, and agree to. These do not go to the board for approval. Um, they have been submitted to the legal department for review. Um, the minimal comments that legal had have been incorporated in the latest version. Um. So really, this is a discussion between y'all. I won't be participating much. Um, if there's questions. You know, I'll do what I can to answer those. Depends on the specific type of question, though. Uh, if there's questions or concerns. We will not be looking to adopt these this evening. Um, this is a workshop. We will set them up for a vote on adoption at the next meeting in September. Um, minimal discussion at that meeting. It's really. Like I said, we, we hope that everybody had already looked at these. Um, we want to workshop any concerns or issues, questions, clarifications, as to maybe why something was recommended. Um. And then we'll take a vote at the next meeting. That's kind of where we're at.
So has. The commissioners, have they, have you all read the new bylaws? Okay, uh, I think Roger, Ken, and I were involved. In working on them. Roger did most of the, he went through it pretty thorough. And, um, and what he had come up with, I thought was pretty good. And so I myself, I have no questions. Is there any discussion?
What were the, what were the major changes? Was there any major changes?
Oh, we just cleaned up, like, uh, the original one would say chairperson. We cleaned up this chair to shorten things up.
Some reformatting, um.
Yeah, I may, Derek's probably going to do that better than I can.
I think, actually, Roger, if, if you want to hit the highlights.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, this Commissioner Lake, I'll, I. A couple of the things that, uh, when I went through becoming a new commissioner, uh, there had been some new laws. Uh, that were applicable, that were not in our, uh, policies. Uh, for example, the training that's required on the Public Records Act and the things along that lines that any board and commission is required to take. So, uh, the, the, the committee incorporated those items. Uh, there was probably some, uh, areas in the, uh, previous bylaws where, uh, it didn't flow well. So I think we tried to take a look at that and made sure that it, it flowed, uh, better. Uh, also, uh. City planning commissions and county planning commissions are, are different animals from a standpoint of county planning commissions. Uh, really have a lot more, uh, authority, uh, under the RCWs. Uh, so one of the things that we tried to do was incorporate the, uh, specific RCWs. Uh, under which we were operating as opposed to not referencing them and wondering. Is there something that we want to do? Is it something that's required by law? And just identify those sorts of things. Uh, and I think that summarizes it, uh. Quite well. Uh, we also, um, tried to take a look at, there was, I think, some confusion on anybody, everybody. Uh, standpoint as to how, uh, the districts were, uh, commissioner districts, how those. Uh, were able to make recommendations, uh, as to who was on the planning commission. We have, um. Six seats that are picking. Pick by commissioners and one that was kind of ambiguous, and I think we identified that as an at-large, uh, that could be anywhere. Uh, so that's, I think, the majority of the issues that we came up with.
Just as a clarification or state law, it's kind of interesting. Um, the. Originally, I don't know if you guys, we've had a planning commission since nineteen thirty five, which is kudos to Franklin County. Also, at the same time, it used to have police power. In other words, it didn't make recommendations. It actually said yay or nay on a proposal. What happened over time is that kind of got, you, you can still do that if it's up to, but that's not where we are, nor are most. Most planning commissions in Washington State are recommending bodies. I can't say that all are, but I'd say eighty to ninety percent, almost all are recommending bodies. It's interesting is that. I'm trying to. Counties are required. If I remember right, to have planning commissions, but they're not required to have a planning department. And, and the planning department. Is actually a new allowance, new relatively to when planning commissions came into effect. Uh, that acts as a, but if you do have a planning department, you shall have a planning commission. You're not required necessarily to have a planning commission. There's other ways, depending on your specific government structure and various things like that. But if you do have a planning department, you shall have a planning commission. You can't have a planning department without a planning commission. So I thought that was a little interesting. Nugget. So anyways, all right, I'm going to shut up again.
And my recollection is that we're probably, what are the first planning commissions in the state? Is that accurate?
Based on, yeah, based on when we, I mean, nineteen thirty five, that's, I mean, the state was only forty years old at that point, not even. Yeah, it was forty five, or the county, I'm sorry. The county was only forty five years old at that point, and we had already adopted one. And I want to say that the, the law came into effect sometime in the thirties. So.
The inception of county was eighteen ninety, then?
Eighteen eighty nine.
Which is the same state of Washington, right?
Became a state in eighteen eighty nine.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We were eighteen eighty three, I think. Darn it, now I can't remember.
They're eighteen eighty nine.
Eighteen eighty nine, okay. All right, yeah. That's when the state became, oh, yeah, same, which makes sense.
Forty four years after we became a state.
Lewis, Lewis and Clark. Came down the rivers and that's where things developed and then. Over time, other sections of the state developed off of that, but the first settlements were, in fact, Franklin County's been around.
So it took forty four years for us to say, maybe we got to have a plan here.
Well, the state passed law at some point earlier than that, but not much earlier.
So it became about when this area started to develop.
Yeah, and.
That's when it, that's when it came about.
It acted in that role of, they would do the research, they would do the investigations, they would make the determinations as to whether a guy could put his farm there or whatever. Once the feds got involved with farm units and stuff like that, I think that might have started getting things rather confusing because you got different levels of governance at that point. You had the feds running around, you had the state guys running around, then you had the locals running around. But, but it was by resolution, not ordinance. Now it's required to do by.
So the city of Casco municipality then was back to turn the century then, right?
That's my understanding, yeah.
See irrigation, when did the project start? In the thirties, thirty thirty?
Yep.
The Communion Basin Project wasn't that in the thirties?
I believe that was part of the.
So I imagine that's what drove. Uh, Frank County to have, because land was being divided, surveyed, broken up, until that's when, I imagine, when they.
I think it was after World War Two is when everybody started really hitting.
Well, that's when they started putting the stuff really in the.
GI program.
And the crops and everything, or the irrigation system. Actually was really starting to go was in the fifties, from what I understand.
Your water actually started flowing.
Right.
Block one being the first, I think.
There's a lot of work to get all that in place.
Can you imagine that would take days to complete that? Too much today.
That's true.
We have he, half a county that's still waiting for the other half to get done.
So on the bylaws, I know we've been into, and I don't know if we've done with the highlight chart or not, but I know we've been into that one time where we had. Whether it was like the board was in a meeting.
The quorum and the super quorum.
Yeah, on, certainly on subdivisions, and then the next meeting, we couldn't, we ended up in a tie.
Yep.
And the next meeting, and only those people could vote again.
Right.
Did we deal with that at all, or can we?
Well, it's supposed to be odd number, but we had one member that wasn't showing up, and so it ended up being a tie.
Well, what we do now is effectively what happens. No, we did not remove that, and the reason for that.
We too, or that was something that was just some weird thought opening?
No, it's not uncommon, actually, on certain items for super majority, and it's so that you don't end up with big decisions being made by, like, say, a small number. Um, because you could have a quorum and not, they want it to be a, for those like subdivisions, conditional use permits, no, but subdivisions, things like that. Top plan changes, zoning changes, the things that affect. Whereas conditional use permits, usual air sites.
And then we actually maybe put in there where we give these in the meeting?
No, we, we have done that. What we did was, this is the way it works. If we're in a tie situation on one of these items and we don't have the four votes. It moves forward to the board with no recommendation from the planning commission and it. Now, since then, we've never had it happen. We've still, we've had some moments where we thought that potential was there, but it didn't occur. But, uh, what happens is we vetted this with legal and everything else. It just moves forward. It would be more of an issue if we still had the police powers and you guys had to make, you know, the actual definitive decision. But because you're doing a recommendation, it just. The board that this is a contentious issue.
I know that's how we ended up solving it.
And, yeah, and that's, that's, that's basically been adopted, and that's been adopted as policy. There's no. That was a glitch in the code where it says shall, and I can't remember, Roger, did we adjust that language at all regarding the shall forward a recommendation?
Um. Yes, like, it, that, again, a recommendation, uh. Isn't necessarily a positive or, or, or negative one. Uh, because it's just going to be the outcome of, of what took place at the, at the planning commission.
Right, so basically.
To, to, to me, that's an attendance issue.
Right, there, there's a. Less people abstain.
And that's.
Yeah.
Well, at least we know how to end, because the, the whole thing was is we didn't know how to end the meeting because we were on the information. We had to send someone on.
Yep, well, that's, yep. That's what we vet, voted. Um.
And I think the, the way staff handles it now is that, that they make the applicant aware of that potentiality and the applicant. Elect to go forward where. Recommendation is made to the, the county commissioners. Will make the decision, which they have, uh, in both of these cases. Um, uh, one. It's, 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 it's not necessarily, uh. The planning commission would recommend it anyway, so, uh, so the applicant is made aware of that in advance and, and make the decision to.
And that, that, because that way we're not delaying it, they're delaying it. They want really that, that recommendation from the planning commission is very important to them, then it gets, it, they have that opportunity to delay for a full.
That happened in, when we were meeting. One of our last meetings, when Caleb Strom said, ask that. Work.
Yep.
If we get into a tie. Or when it was laid out.
Yep. So when we only have four, which is by law a quorum for our, our system. With a split vote or just three where it requires four. Um, if we, because we have to have four to have a decision, not to just chill it. So if we only get three one or two two, then we don't have the four to either recommend approval. We don't have four for the recommendation, then there is no recommendation. Um, and it just goes, there you go, three said yes, two said no, or whatever we end up with. Because it, you know, that could happen too, three and two. We still don't have the number, even though we had five people in attendance. So, um, it just moves forward. The board is presented with the vote count, not, not the individual votes.
Back up on that.
Yep.
Uh, if there's a three to two, isn't that a final vote?
Nope, because you don't have four on those certain items.
Certain items, you got to have four.
Right, on subdivisions, zoning code changes, um, there's a couple comp plan, there's some, a couple other where you have to have four to achieve a recommendation. Um, so if you don't achieve that, then there's no recommendation. Now, the, the, the commission has a right to s- suggest other motions, trying to get. A change if they want, um, but that's up to the commission, and at any point the commission to say. No recommendation, move forward.
And again, that's quite a tendency, especially on certain things that's really important.
Oh, yeah, yep. On all things, just one day a month, usually.
But in that, in that instance, we were four and oh on our decisions.
Right, we were, we all voted for it.
Yeah. Yeah, since then, we haven't had a tie or, uh, been unable to reach at least four.
I think we got to the last time, it's long down, because where it's, hey, we move forward this.
Yep, and then they have a right to pull it and, and request that we defer it to the next meeting in the hopes that we get the full body. Oh, I tell you what, I've been doing this stuff a long time and never had, I had those situations ever arise until I came here. And I'm just like, that's why I was, and then, and then the rules saying. Rule red. Um, those, those changed up. Like, we don't have an ordinance or a section of. We're doing. Yeah, we don't have an ordinance that approved the planning commission. It's carryover from a resolution. Now, if you were to create a new planning commission in a jurisdiction that didn't have one before, you actually have to pass an ordinance, not a resolution. But back in the day, that's all you did was resolutions. Um, unless you have codified law. Um, those were done by ordinance, but. So when I found that out, I kind of freaked out first, and then I was like, we don't have an ordinance approving the planning commission. Then I looked into it and went, oh, we've had one since thirty five, so it just carries forward.
You want to, you want to have fun with Bonner County, I don't. They don't have. They have, the county commissioners decided. Subdivisions, ordinances, whatever. They don't have a planning department or a planning.
Bonner County doesn't have a lot going on either, if I remember right, and they're mostly trees? Isn't it? Is that northern Idaho?
Yeah, it's the. Boundary county is the top one, so it's like sandpoint.
Okay.
Right in there.
Yeah, okay.
It's the weirdest place because we'll drive by. Development wise, it's weird as hell, and then there's weird roads, there's just one or two of them nowhere, right through the guy's yard. Or you're sure somebody's yard gave to him a five million dollar house. It's really weird.
Well, I've seen some of our roads. They seem to do the same.
Don't speak.
It, it's, it's just the way things are done here. Eastman's as opposed to right of ways, um, for roads quite often. Now, the public works is working to convert those over, but, yeah, you'll see a road, and it's just, because of the way a guy's land lays or whatever, whoop.
We even fuck follow the irrigation system. So you gotta, then you want to get weird, you know?
Oh, yeah.
My mother's mom, father's mom, I don't even think it's like this, but there's a right away. But it's a street, it's a direction, they'll never be used as a road. It's really weird. You can tell it's drawn out on a map, not in person.
Do we have any more input? Roger, you got any more input?
No, the, uh, uh, the, the, the copy that we all received is a pretty nasty. Uh, I assume that everybody's gotten a clean copy of that, um, which looks much nicer. It was very difficult since, uh, uh. The original document was. Kind of bifurcated as to what the responsibilities. Were, uh, so the, uh, uh, whatever they call that, we, uh, we have the, the markings of the differences, it's kind of sloppy.
Could you provide us with a, a hard copy of the bylaws? We'd put it in with our records.
Yeah, well, we will, uh, up, you know, between now and the next meeting, I'll make sure that everybody gets another copy. Um, we'll go ahead and send them out hard copies this time. We only sent them out hard copies to Kent and Melinda because they requested that we always do that. But we'll.
I saw that, that modified copy, that, that didn't copy that. I didn't read it, it's true.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send out, basically, I'll probably resend this packet minus the front stuff. It will, it'll be replaced with the.
Yes.
Yeah, you'll get a copy of that. You'll get a copy again of the, uh. It's hard to read, but.
Yeah.
Of this, and we'll send out a hard copy packet to everybody so you got it, because I can see, just looking at this printout, I have a feeling that, you know, that dirty copy was a little hard to read.
It, it was. It was hard to read.
It's a little.
I kept scrolling down and I found this.
Yeah.
And so I went through it and saw all the changes.
And this is the more formal layout. It's got the cover, it's got the chapters and all that, whereas this dirty version was just text, so. Um, and, um, another thing I'll do that I didn't include, which I should have, is I'll send a copy of the original. The currently adopted bylaws too, so just some people have an easier time of reading things that way. Where you can just send them next to each other, because Roger did a great job. He moved things around, he reformat it, he organized things a little bit, but different, so. The layout, you'll be able to see that layout difference better when we look at them. Um, considering, you know, me, you know, two, three hundred page packets out to you guys, send in a hundred pages, that's nothing. Seventy five, whatever, you know? Actually.
This is enough.
Next meeting, well, we'll get into that in a minute.
Do we have, we have any more input on this before we move on?
No, thanks for your guys' time to put in on this stuff.
Yeah, Roger.
Roger's ninety nine point nine nine.
Yeah, he did most of it. Yeah, we just, uh, kind of reviewed, made some choices here and there, but he did most of it, yeah.
That, that can be tedious, so.
Well, if there's, if, you got anything more to say, Roger, concerning the draft bylaws?
No, I, I think it does a good job of organizing, and I think it helps, uh, all of us understand, uh, a little bit better, and new members will understand a little bit better as to, uh. What the basis of these are, not just things that we've made up, but, you know, we're, we're following state law in ninety nine percent of the things. Uh, that we're doing, uh, you know, anywhere from, uh, uh. Internet doctrine and telormore, so.
What's on the state law or county law?
Both.
Both, right?
Yeah, but, see, the state band dates certain things. If you're going to have a planning commission, and that's what he did, is he, he actually referenced those RCWs as opposed to us just doing them. And that makes for cleaner, better, um, for folks that want to read this, if you want to go and find out. What did the state say? Are they really doing it the way they say they're supposed to? You can actually look that reference up, check and go, oh, yeah, it is. Whereas before, we were just doing stuff, but you didn't have any, and again, all of that met state law. But you didn't see, you didn't have that ability to cross check it. It would just be a pla, uh, paragraph saying this is how things are done, but you didn't have any basis of why. Um, did we just make it up? Was it something that was done on the local level, or is this a state requirement?
Like the state law was based in the early nineties.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep. So. I'm trying to get all of our codes updated that way. Um, the development codes, a lot of times they reference ordinances, which just isn't. Or, I'm sorry, our forms and stuff will reference ordinances as opposed to the actual title, chapter, section, and all that, so. One of the things when you start seeing that come through, you'll notice that we've gone through and actually put in those legal references, citations.
Okay, moving on. Um, anything as far as administrative items that you want to discuss?
Couple things. Next month, we have four conditional use permits, right?
Yeah, four.
Um, three of them are structures.
Yeah, three of them are essentially. Yeah, three of them are essentially, uh, the same, like, was it same block area?
Their heights, heights request deviations for, for, uh, and then, just as an FYI, probably in October, well, okay, in September, you'll, you have, but we won't take any action on it. It'll just be so that you have it to start looking over it. But in October, I'm hoping to present to you, okay, in September, you'll see it. Take action. amended RC five. So starting to go through the zoning code, I'm starting to bring those into, the last time they were updated was um, there's been minor tweaks occasionally in the zoning code, but we're going to start moving, you know, we have a new Title sixteen subdivisions to adopt, um, own rework of the zoning code from. We're going through it, we're updating, we're mending, changing things around. Like, okay, my recommendation will be to go to a standard peak height for accessory structures as opposed to eighteen foot is measured, you know, these types of things. Some of the regulations in the RC one, it is, the reason why I'm bringing forward RC one and the RC five is, one, those are our most common, you know, um, requests for conditional use permits regarding peak heights and accessory structures. Um, and because those tend to be. It's kind of, you know, you can pretty much do what you want out up to thirty-five feet, things like that, square footage. But in the RC one, and the RC five, and a few other zones, you know, the size based on the size of your house, and some of these caverns, I, I don't, my recommendation will be to get away from that and allow for the property to dictate. Yeah, you'll still have your forty percent coverage, but if I've got a ten acre lot in an RC one, well, I'm still bound by the same rules as the guy with a one acre lot. And in some cases, that, that's appropriate, in others, maybe not. Um, so basically getting a little more narrow on some of those stricter regulations to make sure that folks that have the same zoning that are in a completely different environment aren't necessarily affected the same way. So that's, but the RC one, RC five is the first ones, then we'll start bringing forward other ones. I don't see us doing a lot of change in the, like, the office zones, or some of what we call zombie zones or ghost zones, where we have them in the books, but we don't really have them on unincorporated land, um, at this time. But we have them in our books because we may at some point, you know, like in the UGA's, you may start to see those showing up or something like that, whereas they're still under our jurisdiction, but we're bringing those zoning requests more in line with what the city desires because that is their future growth area. That's a little down the road. Those are our lowest priority, what I'll call the urban zones. Um, but RS twenty through our, you know, through I two industrial, we'll be revamping, looking at those, and bringing those forward. Trying to bring them in pieces, um, you know, our zoning code alone is over two hundred pages, if I recall correctly. To have that dumped on your lap in one, it just isn't going to work. So bring them in, in pieces, we approve those pieces or make recommendations regarding those pieces. Those go to the board, the board will make, they'll say, yep, and then what'll come is, and then once we've done that, so they've seen them in pieces, then we'll bring the entire document to them and you for a final, yep, this looks like what we said it was going to be. Um, and then we'll adopt that title. And then, you know, but Title sixteen, that'll come in one piece probably, because it's not that much. That's subdivisions. We just, we already did fourteen. We also have a new, um, Title two, which is the, not, it's a chapter something, it's planning commission. Um, and that's been revamped quite a bit as well. Um, just, again, articulating a lot of what's in the bylaws, but then there's some other regulatory stuff that's not bylaw related, it's just, again, this RCWs, which says that we're allowed to exist, and we've done this, and this is what the roles are, dedicating out those types of things. So two, sixteen, and seventeen. We're also going to be doing very soon, critical areas ordinance in conjunction with our shoreline master program. I have filed some paperwork, but we'll be getting a grant to do that. I just got a quote, I haven't had a chance to look at it, but we'll probably be hiring a consultant to do that work. But those will be coming forward as well. That's, that's kind of a, you know, we did the comp plan, well, you also have to do critical areas ordinance, and then we are scheduled for a shoreline master program update as well. Normally, see, we would have gotten it done in eighteen, so all we'd be doing was the shoreline management. But because of the way things worked out, we're having to do both. Um, but we'll get it done. Um, and those will be coming before you as well. That's, I'd say about, you know, grand total, we're looking at probably about six, seven months still of us bringing things. There may be, and there'll be gaps when you don't see any of that stuff because of just the load we have. Because, yeah, you know, we did so far six subdivisions, I think. Zara Gosa is still waiting, they're working out some details, uh, so that will be coming forward, the one that was pulled. That's still active, they're just having to work with, you know, like, Big Sky's used to it, they've done it a few times, so they know boom, 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 how to deal with all that stuff. Um, I don't want to initiate an appeal, a seep appeal while they're still talking. That just drags things out even more because it goes, it can get weird, so.
The Pasco urban growth, the deal that we were working on next, that's been finalized.
Correct, June first, it was adopted, where I think, no, we are still under the sixty day clock where, so we could still get appealed or something like that on it, um, but it, it's getting close. June one. July one, I think we just passed sixty days. Well, it's sixty days, it's not sixty days from adoption, I apologize. It's just sixty days from when we posted that we did it. Um, so I think we got about a week left, and then we'll, we'll be able to, uh, say it's done.
Anything else that we need to go over?
Mr. Chair, I had a question, um, on the, uh, Commissioner Link, on the, uh, reviews of the, uh, Hunter County codes, uh, will we be workshopping those? That would be my preference.
Are you talking about on the zoning code stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, I'll bring it, and then I'll bring it on September so that you guys can see it. Um, due to the length of it, but we'll see how long it goes. But, uh, yes, we'll be workshopping each of those things so that we have time to talk about it, and then we'll hold, hold the planning commission, oh, that's right, we do our workshops on separate meetings. So, yeah, I think, I think that would be prudent. Workshops are generally held at the last Tuesday of the month, and then, so we'll workshop them. But that would be in October, is when I'd be looking at us taking a vote. So I'll give you guys copies in September, we'll, we'll set up for a workshop at the end of September, then that following meeting, potentially your recommendation to the board on that, if you're feeling comfortable after that workshop.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then I will adjourn at seven to forty-one.
Thank you.
Thank you.